Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hello. Does anyone want to volunteer to be Secretary this evening? Raquel's not coming. Don't look away, Phil.
I nominate Phil.
I think that's a unanimous vote, so.
I know.
Alright.
Okay, I've got seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Looks like we've got a quorum, so we'll go forward. I'll ask the Acting Secretary to call the roll, please.
Sure, Commissioner Dallow?
Here.
Commissioner DeSico? Commissioner DeSico? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Meredith?
Here.
Commissioner Flynn?
Here.
Commissioner Oppone? Commissioner Oppone? Absent. Commissioner Moore is absent. Chairman Moffett?
Yes.
Yes, and Commissioner Turner is here. We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. First item is approve of the agenda. There are no corrections, only entertaining motion.
So.
Support.
Moved by Flynn, support by Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the August tenth meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Move by Turner.
Move by Meredith.
Meredith?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Two items on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Anthony. I was on the call, got disconnected.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Send that man a check. So, as I was saying, there were two items this evening for the Board to consider, the first being an amendment to a plan we've seen a handful of times over the years. Site Plan Number Two Zero Dash One Seven P U D Number One, Stephen Mancini Legacy Village Land Holdings. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the Acting Secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of a mixed-use residential and commercial planned unit development. Applicant Stephen Mancini, Legacy Village Land Holdings LLC, thirty-eight-six-hundred Van Dyke, Suite One Hundred, Sterling Heights, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-two. Proposed use: mixed-use residential and commercial development. Location is vacant lot, parcel number twenty-three dash zero-seven dash zero-nine dash two-hundred dash zero-two-two, south of Twenty-Five Mile Road, west of Van Dyke, Site Plan Number Twenty Dash Seventeen, P U D One. Sidewell number is twenty-three dash zero-seven dash zero-nine dash two-hundred dash zero-two-two. The legal description is shown. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM via Zoom for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the planned unit development application. The meeting will be held via Zoom due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. You may participate at no cost in the virtual meeting by calling the following number: three-one-two, six-two-six, six-seven-nine-nine, and the meeting ID is eight-three-one, three-seven-six-six, nine-one-seven-five. The application for the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday from eight-thirty AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act One Ten of two thousand and six as amended. Signed Shelby Township Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Morris Secretary, and it was published August fifth, two thousand and twenty, in the Macomb Daily. And a hundred and three property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, and can you, this is a special inuse request, is that correct?
It's P U D.
Okay, so.
If I may clarify, I think in two thousand and six, the P U D, we've never finalized the P U D except on the section that was constructed. So we're still in the preliminary stages. I think it's a good way to use the ordinance here is we're approving everything preliminarily, then when they come in on a certain section, we do a final. So today we're considering like amendment to the preliminary P U D.
Okay, alright, thank you. The format for this hearing will be as follows. The petitioner will be allowed, or representative, to state the reason, you know, what they're requesting and their reasons for it. I'll then turn it to the Board to ask their questions. Then I will open up the public to make any comments or ask any questions. I'll make note of those. Then I'll bring the petitioner back up to answer those questions. And then we will make our recommendation based on sort of the information that we gleaned this evening. At this point, Mr. Mancini, I see you're on the call, but is there someone here representing you, or are you making a present?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Jim Epic, who's been involved even right from the beginning.
Great, great. And again, I would need you naming your address for the record, too, please.
I'm sorry, Stephen Mancini. You know what, I'm gonna have to read the address off my card, because this card. Three-eight-six-hundred Van Dyke, Suite One Hundred, Sterling Heights, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-two.
Great, thank you. Mr. Epic, you're up.
Mr. Moffett, thank you and good evening, and thank you to the Planning Commission and the community for arranging this meeting. I know we had hoped to have met in public at the Township Hall, and hopefully soon enough we'll be able to do that, so we do appreciate your time and we'll try not to take up too much of your evening. Again, my name is Jim Epic. I'm at nine-three-three-six Sashaba Road, Clarkston, Michigan, four-eight-three-four-eight, and I am landscape architect and urban design planner with Steve and his partners. And again, tonight I'm representing Steve Mancini, Paul Jankowski, both partners in the Legacy Land Holding P U D. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share my screen, go through a brief presentation, and then I'll take it down as you guys ask questions and certainly can bring it back up as needed.
Very good.
So, as the public notice had stated, and your comments had stated, Mr. Kirk said this was originally a P U D that was originally approved, or at least preliminarily approved and then Phase One approved in two thousand and seven, and so we've been working on this property since probably two thousand and five and earlier, and Mr. Mancini and his family have owned this property for going on forty-plus years. So it's an important piece of property in the township, certainly an important piece of property to the Mancini family, and in large part why we've chosen to call it Legacy Village, because it really is about the quality and the character that's going into the neighborhood that we think is so important. The property is one hundred and thirty-one acres located on the north, I'm sorry, the southwest side of Twenty-Five Mile and Van Dyke, originally back in two thousand and five. Two thousand and five and two thousand and seven. P U D was put forward, mixed-use P U D, and was ultimately approved from a preliminary point of view, and then Phase One was approved and is under construction now. The original P U D envisioned multiple different types of housing, single-family, multifamily, right from a two-plex on up to a twelve-plex unit, and then two hundred and fifty units of senior assisted living, as well as about a hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet of retail on the corner at Twenty-Five and Van Dyke, as well as three out parcels. Total property envisioned seven hundred and sixty-six units at that time. And as we know, based on driving through the area, Phase One was, had received final approval. It was the only project that was submitted for final approval, the only phase, and that was approved. There are seventy-nine single-family lots on there, and currently about two-thirds are under construction, or quite a few new Shelby Township residents are living in those. We've got about twenty to twenty-five lots still under development in Phase One. Sales have been very, very good. COVID obviously has slowed us down, but we're excited by, you know, the continued build of that quality of that neighborhood. Over the years, of course, we have been back before the Planning Commission a number of times. There are a number of different amendments proposed, considered, and even some approved preliminarily for this property. Obviously, the downturn of two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine changed some of the dynamics. I think from Stephen Paul's point of view, it's good news that nothing actually moved forward with any of those phases, because we've reached a point now where we think we understand the market very, very well. We've seen some response to the single-family homes. We've watched what's happening with probably the over-built building of senior housing in Shelby Township and Sterling Heights, and frankly, all the communities, southeast Detroit or northeast Detroit. And so what we're asking for tonight is review and ideally recommendation for approval for revised preliminary P U D and site plan. As I said, I guess to give highlights of this, and then we'll go through the details briefly, and then be available for any questions or any further detail. A few things that caused us to take a closer look at this besides just that continuous drive to continue to build quality and build on that legacy of the family is, number one, early on in the preliminary, the original preliminary, we knew obviously that we would need detention. We've got the middle branch of the Clinton River to the north, I'm sorry, the southeast corner of the property. But as we got into that and understood the floodplains that are on there, we really began a very long process of working with the county, working with the Eagle, the D E Q, and understood exactly the impact of this property particularly on the detention pond. And so we've redesigned and actually just in the last few days have received all full approvals to begin construction of this detention and basin detention pond. It's gonna be beautiful, and it's also gonna take care of this whole area, preserve that middle branch, obviously. But we have received final Eagle approval, county approval, and now township approval to begin construction. I think you'll go out to the site and you'll see that that's being staked, and that pond construction will begin very, very quickly. We actually had a previous permit, which is still valid. It had to be revalidated with the updated design, but we'll move quickly to have that pond constructed this fall. Beyond that, we wanted to take a closer look at the roads. Our previous plan had a mesh network of roads, and frankly, in every plan I've ever brought to Shelby Township and that we've designed other places, we know that dispersing vehicles through an area becomes very, very important. We want to give cars as many routes as we can. As we started to look at this and just knowing Twenty-Five Mile, knowing the high school down the street, we began to get concerned that actually we were making the neighborhood a little too porous and too inviting to cut through traffic. And so we've redesigned the plan coming off of Twenty-Five Mile Road. You certainly can still get down to Van Dyke, but it's, previously it was more deliberate, you had a number of choices. So we've tried to deter cut-through traffic, deter fast traffic by adding things like a roundabout to really maintain this as a very livable neighborhood as opposed to just a vehicular cut-through. The third thing that we've contended with are the existing I T C or power overhead power line corridor. There's a large corridor going through the site kind of on an angle out to the west that no doubt you guys are aware of. We've continued to work with I T C. We understand their easement. We've actually gotten some updates and some approvals to work within that easement to cross through it with driveways. And so, you know, that's just a known entity within this neighborhood, but it certainly does impact on the building types and the usability of certain parts of the land. So, again, previously, our two thousand and seven plan, we had two hundred and seventy-six units. We are reducing, asking to be reduced our density from seven-sixty-six to five-seventy-eight. That's an almost twenty-five percent reduction in residential density. And beyond that, we're doing that by adding single-family homes. We're proposing to add sixty-seven additional single-family homes, which would bring it up to a hundred and forty-six single-family homes. That means that forty percent of the neighborhood, just over forty percent of the neighborhood, will be single-family homes. Forty percent of the land area will be single-family homes, and that is a nice transition as we go from Van Dyke up through the single-family homes and then to our adjacent neighbors to the west. Previously, we had ten different types, I'm sorry, six different types of multifamily houses. As I said, everything from two-plexes, four-plexes, six-plexes, eight-plexes, ten-plexes, and twelve-plexes. I think we were a little aggressive. I think we were a little bullish back in two thousand and two, twenty oh-seven. But it really just became probably too diverse of a market. And we've had the luxury of watching some of the very successful projects in Shelby Township and elsewhere, and we've really zoned in on three particular products, really luxury duplex units attached to family homes. Those are located in the central area. We've downsized our townhomes where previously we had twelve-unit townhomes that were three-story. We now have six-unit and a few four-unit townhomes that are two-story. So they're more marketable, much more neighborhood-oriented townhomes, which we'll show some pictures of. And then we removed completely the senior assisted living that was previously approved in that corner. With the power lines, with the adjacency to the power lines and getting closer to Van Dyke, we feel strongly that this is not a for-sale product market on this side of the, on this triangle. And so we're proposing here two hundred and eighty-eight luxury apartments. They'd be housed in twelve different buildings, twenty units, I'm sorry, twenty-four units per building. So they're three-story buildings, very high-end, and we'll show some pictures of those. We've done, we've done an awful lot of study, an awful lot of market analysis, and we feel despite, from a developer's point of view, reducing our density by twenty-five percent, we've been able to increase open space. We've been able to, we think more specifically, target the market and really come out with a very good product that despite kind of the length of time since two thousand and seven, we know that we can move very quickly now to achieving this. From a chart point of view, as I said, we're adding sixty-seven single-family homes. From a multifamily point of view, we're going from six housing types to three housing types and reducing the multifamily by just five units. And we're reducing the senior assisted living, those two hundred and fifty units, removing that completely. So net-net, we're removing a hundred and eighty-eight units from the property or twenty-four percent of the previously preliminarily approved density. Our commercial stays really almost exactly the same, a hundred and twenty-four and change, thousand square feet to a hundred and twenty-five, as well as three outlots. I'd like to just take a few minutes to go through some of our architecture, because I think it's important, as much enjoyment as I get of showing you the designs that we create, it really, at the end of the day, just boils down to the quality of the architecture and the quality of the building. Our single-family homes, we're proposing an additional sixty-seven lots, and those lots are proposed to be sixty-seven foot wide by a hundred and twenty feet deep. To compare that to Phase One, Phase One, they're a hundred and twenty foot deep as well, and they're seventy foot wide. So we're proposing that these lots are just three feet more narrow. The homes will be slightly smaller. We're trying to attract a slightly different market, but still, as you can see from these pictures, this is the ranch home followed by the colonial home. Still beautiful cars with two- and three-car garages, masonry materials, still very, very high-end homes, just slightly smaller than what we're building in Phase One. Interestingly, the reason we went from seventy foot to sixty-seven foot is in Phase One, we were approved with side setbacks of seven and eight foot or fifteen foot total. Once we got building those and understood some of the requirements of air conditioning, some of the real nuances of the side yards and drainage, working with AEW and your township engineers as well as your planning department, we had to modify those lots, and we actually came in for a variance on the Phase One lots of a three-foot variance on the side yards to allow us to place the air conditioning and to, of course, achieve drainage. What we tried to do here is say, how do we create a plan that we don't have to come in with a variance? And so we worked much more quickly, or much, much more focused, I should say, on engineering right from the preliminary stage. Jenny Shock is on the line, our team engineer, and she's really helped ensure that, we know that our side yard drainage will work with the colonials. The air conditioner will be on the side tucked behind the garage with the ranches that'll be in the rear of the house. And so from a distance to distance, our homes will be exactly the same as they are in Phase One with that twelve-foot plus between buildings. And I should point out with the ranch homes, that maximum setback, or that I should say minimum setback, only occurs when we have a three-car garage option chosen. You know, probably at least half of the people building colonial homes will choose the two-car garage option, and it would have a much larger green space on the side of the home.
Excuse me, I hate to break in, but apparently somebody is sharing their screen, and what was mailed to the residents has nothing about an actual online meeting. It's just a telephone conversation. Is there any way we can get access to an online meeting? I mean, if images are being shared and things like that, I think that the residents need to be able to see that.
On the notice that you received, there wasn't an address to the Zoom address?
I do not see that.
Chairman Moffett?
Yeah, Julie.
Oh, we do not share the video option with the residents. However, we did note on the postcards and the mailings that they can call our department, and we would share the plan with them. So they had an opportunity to either call us, or we could have, where we could have emailed the plans to them.
I do have, see the images that are being shared by the developer.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is, this is not, this is not a perfect system. I don't, are we broadcasting this, Julie?
Chairman Moffett, this is Nick Monticelli. Yes, we are. Sir, do you live in Shelby Township?
Yes.
Are you a Comcast or Wide Open West subscriber?
Yes.
Which one, sir?
Well, not on television, not TV, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we do, we do air this on the public access channel, and so that means... So lacking that, there frankly just aren't options to our disposal to do that, to share it.
The only thing I might add is that this, of course, will be online after the meeting, probably within two to three business days. So the resident can log on and watch it afterwards and see the images we're seeing now.
And then, and then also, you know, we, 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 we are a recommending body. Ultimately, before any action is, I mean, the Township, the Board of Trustees will actually, may. So there still is an opportunity to weigh in on if there's something that is lost in translation.
Mr. Moffett, also, anybody can give us a call at the township, and I'd be more than happy to share these plans with them.
Okay.
And the, and the, the images that are being shared by the developer at this time, is there any way to get that?
Yes, I can email those to you as well. Just give me a call in the morning. I'd be happy to share those photos with you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Epic, why don't you continue, please?
Sure, I appreciate that. And we have made a P U D available to the township, and we'll work with Julie to make sure that she has the current drawings, and we can, you know, send that to her even tonight.
Great.
So we went through the single-family, sixty-seven single-family, making up the forty percent of the land that'll be single-family homes. With the duplexes, attached duplexes, we're proposing fifty-eight units. So what's some quick math on fifty-eight, about twenty?
Square footage is both on the, on the single-family homes?
The ranch homes are proposed to be twenty-four hundred square foot. The colonial homes will be three thousand one hundred and twenty-five square foot, both having a three-car garage option. Right. The duplexes are, we're proposing fifty-eight actual units, so twenty-six actual buildings. The, these will be on a private road. In fact, all of our roads are private, but still a twenty-seven foot back of curb road. The duplexes will be just under twenty-two hundred square feet, twenty-one eighty-five square feet, and there'll be two and three bedrooms, master bedroom, I'm sorry, all three bedrooms are upstairs in the duplexes, but very, very nice homes. The materials, both in the, the single-family and the attached to family, are all masonry, brick, stone, cement shingle, so it's a hardy plank-type shingle, really, really beautifully done. And what's nice about them is it really is gonna be a very green neighborhood, so there's space between them as well as some open space areas in the backyards and corners and so forth. With both the townhomes and the luxury rental units, we've started to change the architecture a little bit. We've spent an awful lot of time in Shelby Township understanding what's being built, how do we differentiate ourselves from that? How do we attract perhaps more of a millennial crowd, some of the new home buyers, and frankly, even some of the people who are Shelby Township residents and might be in a three- or four-bedroom home, and now it's just time to go to something with a little less maintenance and so forth. So these would be the townhomes along Legacy Boulevard, along that road where we added the roundabout in the middle to slow down traffic. These are two-story townhomes compared to our old three-story. Everything has a two-car garage, some type of raised elevated patio. We do have patios and decks in the back, but we wanted to make sure that we put them out front as well to, you know, really try and activate the street, try and create spaces where people don't pull into their garage and then just disappear. Along, along that main road going through the corner, there is actually an existing underground utility line. And so these homes are actually set back a little bit further. They'll have twenty-five-foot front setbacks from the building to the sidewalk, and then another twelve feet to the curb. So there'll be plenty of green space going down that road. Those sizes, Mr. Moffett, as long as you asked, we're just under two thousand square foot for each of these, about nineteen-twenty-five square footage of the townhomes. Two stories are all one unit. It's not a stacked.
Great.
And then lastly, what we're calling our luxury rental, and the reason we're saying that is not only the exterior materials, but really the interior. These are units that, that the Mancini family, Steve Mancini in Legacy Land Holdings, plan to build, own, and operate. This is not something that's gonna be run by a third-party management company or flipped and sold to another out-of-state developer. So, so these are really beautiful apartments. As I said, there'll be twenty-four per building, center elevators that go into it, but there's not a center hallway. So the units on the end, there's an entrance on each side of the building. Those go up and then directly into a hallway that would enter just four different units on each floor. The buildings on the outside again are masonry with a steel railings. cement board for kind of that more modern and then some standing metal seam siding. So so really beautiful look, kind of a contemporary, almost an industrial feel to it, trying to get away from kind of the, you know, the nineteen eighty nineties apartment styles. We think that seeing the market, reading some articles now about, you know, just this, this glut of single family housing that we're going to have in places like Troy and other areas, that the the rental market really is going to be very, very strong. Lastly, I'll show you that that we are going to be a full.
How about sizes on those units?
Sizes on those units, we're going to have one and two bedrooms, three stories. I'm sorry, I don't have in my notes, the square footage of the buildings, but of the units, but I'll get those. I apologize. Maybe I can get that during our meeting today.
One, one twos, no threes.
One twos, no threes at this time. We with this type of of, you know, with a three story unit, we're seeing more singles, young professionals. I think we'll see in more of a two story unit that you'll have more three bedrooms and more young families in those. We are proposing a clubhouse in here with a swimming pool. So it really is going to be a full maintenance, you know, full, fully maintained lifestyle. There's also a number of garage units or carports you'll see in it. Actually, carports, not closed garages, as well as surface parking lots, and those are all to the interior of the site. So you won't see those until you're right inside of the of the complex. In summary, and then I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman. In summary, again, we're proposing to add sixty seven additional single family homes, reduce the multifamily by five, remove the two hundred fifty senior assisted living. Simplify the the multi unit by going from six to two, I say three units actually, because we've got the duplexes, the townhomes and the apartments. Reducing the overall density by almost twenty five percent and establishing to new, new architecture and and this kind of massive drainage system that'll improve the entire area. With that, I thank you guys for your time and we're here to answer questions.
Right. I want you to unsure that.
I can figure that out.
There you go. Okay, so I'll bring it to the board for any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dello.
And no doubt, this is a beautiful project. When what I'm seeing at the notes of the township engineer, he have a lot of open questions that will really make me determine to say yes or no on that. And very important notice of the heights of the building, the parking counts. There's a lot of necessary notes. I don't know if the engineer had responded to any of the notes that the township engineer had made comments on.
Mr. Chairman, should I respond directly?
Yep. These, these.
Mr. Dello, I I appreciate that. Yeah, you're exactly right. And AEW and the township engineers provided a great letter. I went through it. I went through it with Jenny Shock, our engineer. It's my understanding that that nearly every one of those comments, or I should say, really every one of those comments are important details, but details that would be part of a final site plan submission. So what what we anticipate doing is, is should we be granted a recommendation and ideally ultimately approval for preliminary PUD? Then each of these phases will have to come in for final site plan approval onto their own, where at that point, we provide full engineering. All the necessary counts and pipe sizing and parking counts. I will say that for sure, our buildings are within the Shelby Township ordinance. Your maximum distance of a building is a hundred and eighty foot. Our apartments are exactly a hundred and eighty foot. The townhomes are about a hundred and sixty. And the heights of the buildings are are below the the standards as well. So I don't know if the township engineer is here, perhaps the planning can partner can speak on it, but we we fully understand the comments, don't disagree with them. But it's our belief that those would all be forthcoming at final site plan and and you'll get all that information for sure.
So you, you'll have an opportunity to to yell at them if if they don't correct things that you think need to be
Corrected. You just want to prove it.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll crack at that. I'm sorry, who was that?
Mr. Kirk.
Ah, Mr. Kirk.
In the beginning, I said, we're at a preliminary plan stage, Carl, and under the ordinance, at this point, you just have to show that the plan has merit and has the potential to meet the requirements of this ordinance. So as Mr. Epping just pointed out, it's kind of a preliminary plan. As they proceed to get to the final, then they can spend the money, spend any additional engineering, whatever else we need to answer our questions.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And, you know, and it's, as often as we've sort of looked at this plan in various, you know, it's, it's, it's hard, you know, it's hard to view it sort of as preliminary, but but that's in fact what it is. Anyone else with a comment?
Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Few comments. I can tell you that this plan as a preliminary plan, I know it's preliminary, but I can tell you that it is a significant improvement over what was already a remarkable plan for the township. Anytime you can cut density down by twenty five percent or thereabouts, that's a very positive development. I believe that your decision to abandon the senior housing was a smart move, given then the abundance of senior housing that's already been built and those that are currently under construction in the township. And the fact that it's almost fifty percent, well, forty percent, single family homes is a very good benefit for everyone. But I do have a question. The area where you had the senior housing before, where you have the retention pond now. Mr. Epping, you had said that this is not a for saleable area. I know we do have some single family homes coming off roads like that. So why do you believe that is not a for saleable area? And that were there warrant apartments?
Well, it's, it certainly is a great question. I think it's my opinion. But we look at kind of the availability of property and developable land in the area. My old home is right off of I seventy five with just a bunch of pine trees. So so you can certainly build great homes close to areas, but when we're looking at a hundred and thirty acre development. And we know that as we move further to the west to phase one and phase two, and then internal to the site where we're kind of isolate ourselves, those become more marketable from a for sale point of view. We think the market for rentals is fantastic. You know, every indicator is changing that way, that it's not only an economic decision for people, but it's a lifestyle decision. So when we're looking at how do we really cover the Shelby Township market and the Macomb County market? We know that high end rentals should be part of that. And the most logical place for us to do that is to put those closer to a power line, closer to the, to the busy Van Dyke Road where people can still say, hey, this is a great place to live. I'm just not sure that I want to spend four hundred thousand dollars to have a home right here.
When you talk about high end rentals, what do you exactly talk, figure the price range for those?
We haven't really determined that yet. That'll be, if it really worked out in final, but I think that these are going to be ranging anywhere from eighteen hundred up to two thousand twenty two hundred per per month.
All right, I certainly think this is well worth consideration. So it would definitely have my support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess, yeah, and and Mr. Turner sort of touched on, frankly, the only issue that I would potentially have is that that those apartments be of a significant size, you know, to merit, you know, a higher rent, a higher higher rentals. So.
I'll get you that square footage. I apologize. I don't have it off, off the top of my mind.
Given the amenities and given the architecture, I don't doubt that the case, but you know, oftentimes it comes down to a price per square foot. And that, that, so, right. And fairness to everyone else in the neighborhood. So anyone else with any questions?
Steve Mancini, and I just wanted to kind of convey some history. You know, when we, we started off with a senior care facility, then we went to a senior care facility with some supporting cottages, like duplex type cottages. That was rental, I mean, even senior facilities are rental. And we look at some of the product, you know, in Shelby Township that are rentals. So our, our thought was, has always been, you know, when you're in close proximity to the power line and you're kind of isolated in that corner, that a rental product would be a product that we'd have a better potential of maintaining a higher level of occupancy, which is, I think, good for the development. Nobody wants to see a development go dark. So yes, we've switched away from senior care, but we still have not switched away from the, from the original concept, which was that that part of the development would be a rental rental product.
Okay.
Raise that.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else on the board?
Chairman Moffett, Gene Meredith.
Hey, Gene.
Hi. Did anyone survey the phase one homeowners of this new project or new development? Do we do any surveys? I'm asking the developer.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
We have not, or I should say, I have not held any formal meetings with the adjacent neighbors. We did back, you know, ten years ago or more had tremendous meetings and frankly, they were a great group and and very active. We walked out there back with Glenn Winn many mornings. We have not done that formally since then. I know that through construction of phase one that there's been a lot of interaction. I know we've been trying to be very responsive to any needs. But I can't speak for the neighbors of any collective opinion.
Yeah, and and Jim, when I, you know, when we originally, when we say the neighbors, when we originally went for preliminary PUD approval, I spent some time in with the neighbors in the existing neighborhood. And one thing that they were appreciative of was the idea of putting a buffer of single family residents between what I would call the development on the west side of Lawson Creek and and our development. And and so we've kind of carried that same thought process with this next proposal and putting that on, again, another row of single family. So we haven't talked to the residents on Lawson Creek Drive, but quite frankly, they're always part of the original PUD. And and I think that we're, we're, you know, we're still following that same concept of the original PUD and even adding another layer of resident, a single family. So.
I mean, that is a good point. I mean, they, the, the, the people that are in the development currently are aware of frankly, a, a plan that was even a little bit more aggressive in terms of density. And so now you're actually doing less and now you're offering them a buffer with those single family homes.
It's kind of the same. I I had some beers in the basement of some of the residents just to talk to them. And Jerry, you were around, you probably remember that didn't, we didn't really have any opposition and and.
No, that it was that issue, the buffer, and then also just not connecting into that's the subdivision to which you put a call to Zach there. So.
And my last one is the build out. How many years is it going to be to build out? The project.
Jim, save me.
Our, our goal has always been to, you know, to build this project. And, you know, I think if you went back to some of our notes and some of our studies, anywhere from five to ten years, we've hit some unusual circumstances, the O eight crisis, and now the this pandemic, which seems that the housing market's booming, the question is, will it will it hold true? But again, I I think reasonably, this is a five to ten year development.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, anyone else at the board? Hearing none. You guys want to pay attention? Uh, this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this request, or marginally entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are recommending body and the township board will evaluate our recommendation in that ultimately the township board will make the final decision. At this point, and bear with us, because this is not an absolute science on this process, we're going to, anyone that wishes to ask a question or offer a comment, then I will take note of. And then when I've exhausted all the questions and comments, I'll bring the petitioners back up to answer those questions or as best they can. So at this point.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to jump in and offer a plan and how we're going to take public comment here. If you have been using Zoom or unfamiliar with it, Zoom has a virtual hand raising function. So if you're on a computer this evening, we're going to ask you to click on the bottom of your screen at the bottom that says participants. Then a column will appear on the right hand side. Then you can press the button that says raise hand. If you're using a Zoom app on your smartphone, there are going to be dots in the lower right hand corner. You can press that button and then press raise hand. If you're calling by phone tonight, which many of our members in the public are, simply press star nine. And then I'll be notified that you would like to speak. I can see a few virtual hands are already going out, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so if you want to start bringing them in, when you're recognized, if you can get your name and your address, please.
We're going to start with user phone number. It's a five eight six area code ending in seven, six, three. We're asking you to unmute yourself. And again, please state your name and where you're from.
Uh, good afternoon, gentlemen. How are you? My name is Chris Barrow. I live at five, three, nine, one, nine, Lawson Creek Drive. Can everybody hear me on this phone?
Yep.
Okay, just a quick question. Can you go back to the map, please? Everything looks great. And I don't think the faces of the units and all that, that's all fine. And Steve is right. He did talk about having a street behind Lawson Creek, which is in these new plans again. Agreed. The only difference I see here, my only concern looking at this entire development is when I look at the apartments, which were not part of the original plan and the amount of traffic that apartments can generate, we're just having two streets coming out of the apartment complex, one into a roundabout, which isn't always very convenient. And the other one, a short street coming right out to Lawson Creek. And the amount of additional traffic that'll create coming down our streets that we never had before. Granted, it's just that one drive coming out, but that's one of only two drives that come out of a large occupancy development where those apartments are going in. What are we going to do about controlling traffic that's going to be coming down Lawson Creek, which we've never had before?
Okay, thank you. Uh, any additional questions? Apparently not. Okay, Nick, why don't you take the next caller?
All right, next person's going to be David.
Uh, good afternoon. This is David Graham. Five, four, one, five, five, Lawson Creek. My only comments or concerns I have are with phase five, the apartments, again, kind of what Chris just iterated, the the density there with a senior housing complex. You may have a less density or a greater density, but that density, I would assume, is more static. They don't drive around. They don't move around a lot with those apartments. You are going to have a lot more traffic. And just like Chris said, you only have two egresses for phases three, four and five. One is to go back down Lawson Creek, or one is to dump out into Van Dyke. I'd also like to point out that phase one's mailboxes are right at that street corner. So that street corner already gets a lot of vehicular traffic with the residents getting their mail. Um, I think that's going to become a choke point. And I'm also going to assume that that might become a bus stop, which then would also become dangerous for kids.
Okay, thank you.
All right, caller two, four, eight, ending in seven, two, three.
Hello?
Good evening.
This is this is Kurt David, five, four, three, three, seven, Lawson Creek. Basically reiterating the, the issue, we have four hundred and eighty three added units going through Lawson Creek to the high school and the middle school. And I would appreciate that street being turned into a a walking path, bike path, to encourage some more responsible commuting to the high school and to the, to the, to the middle school and not creating a crazy speedway path through Lawson Creek as it already is. There's, there's too many speeders. And and it's a very low density at at the moment. But when there's another four hundred and some odd units driving through there to get to school, I don't think that's a very good idea, especially with the the mailboxes. uh, I don't think that's a very good idea, especially with the, the mailboxes, uh, right at that corner. So if, if we can cut that, that vehicle traffic off of Lawson Creek, that would be, uh, great as far as I'm concerned. Otherwise, the, the development looks fantastic to me.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, next.
User dot T.
Hi, my name is, uh, Jason Trasko and I am at five five zero eight two Timbers Edge. And I'm looking at the, and this question is more for Mr. Epping. Um, I'm looking at the, the map and I am on the north side of twenty-five mile. And unfortunately, I don't see Timbers Edge where that would be. And I was wondering if there was a way to better highlight that, maybe hovering your mouse over that, because I'm not quite sure where that is.
Mr. Chairman, there's.
Sure.
Mr. Trasko, I, I switched back to the two thousand and seven plan, which is overlaid on the aerial slightly different scale. But could you help me? Is this Timbers Edge?
I don't believe so. That looks more like Apple Lane.
And are you east or west of that?
I am, uh, east of that.
Okay.
I'm, uh, probably what? You?
I'm sorry, I don't see. I can certainly highlight that on the plan and make that available even to the plan that I, I, I send back to the township tomorrow, um, to identify. I don't see a, a curb cut in here that looks like there's a lot of single family driveways.
And I, I don't either. And I'm wondering if maybe the map is older, which I, I just wanted to, to know where our street would come out to and what it would be looking at.
Well, that's a good point. Your street may be new and I, I'll update that information, uh, along the, along the.
Jim, just a comment. Timbers Edge is the next street east of Apple Lane. So it would be, um, I don't know if you, is that Apple Lane you're showing right there?
It's here.
Now, what street is that?
I don't have those labeled.
That, that's Apple Lane. Timbers Edge is right in here, right before, I can't tell from the map, but it's, it's right before Apple Lane.
Yes.
Pre- predates this, uh, or postdates this aerial you're saying. So there's a road in here.
It's, Jim, it's about equidistant. The distance from Lawson Creek Drive to Apple Lane, it's just slightly more from Apple Lane to Timbers Edge.
Somewhere in here.
About the R one B that you're pointing to.
So, so that you'd be approximately right in this area here on the new plan, which is probably right on the back of, uh, of the proposed new single family homes, uh, right in front of or just to the bottom of, of the proposed commercial. We'll say that this commercial has always, uh, been planned, uh, although once this comes into final, we'll make sure that we have actual tenants and buildings. We know that this commercial will change. We know that there's going to be significant landscaping. So when you come out of your road, if you are opposite the commercial, you'll be looking at a lot of beautiful landscaping. I think probably right where you are is right down, uh, where this landscaping and these homes have come together, but I can verify that.
And then those, those plans will be available tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, okay, Nick, next person.
Caller two four eight, ending in two one six.
Hi, this is Connie. I'm resident of Lawson Creek, five four three three seven. And as a mom, I would like to point out that Lawson Creek is very curvy. And considering that I am walking up and down the street all the time, um, there are certain points where the road does curve that is very hard to see around. And I am also very, very concerned about additional cars on the street. Um, and potentially with, with the way the street is designed, it is family oriented with the, with the foot levels and the colonial. And I'm just very, very concerned as a mom about extra traffic.
Okay, thank you.
And that is it for public speakers, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Tell you what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna give it maybe, uh, ten seconds for people, um.
Hello, my name is, can I talk? Sorry, I'm trying to raise my hand.
Sure, yep.
My name is Joe, my name is Joe Petrazzo. Address is five three eight nine three Lawson Creek. Uh, my kids go to school in Utica District. Has anybody talked to anybody running the school buses in the Comunitas Schools? They are getting picked up on the corner of twenty-five mile road. And every day Officer Paul is out there giving people tickets because the bus cannot come down the street because there's one, way too much traffic, two, it's not wide enough. And three, they have nowhere to turn around. And you only have two accesses coming out of here. So I think someone needs to talk to the Utica School District for the buses, because you are waiting for an accident to happen on that corner.
Okay, thank you.
And the sub is not even full yet. And you want to add everything else on top of it, you're going to have an issue.
Thank you. So Nick, do you see anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, Jim, why don't you take that down? Uh, I'm going to bring it back to the board and ask the, the planner for her comments.
You ready for me, Chairman Moffett?
I leave you the planner.
All right. Now I was waiting for anybody from the board if they had any additional questions. Um, so my comments are, are, are favorable in this, on, on this modification to this PUD. The, um, the density on this has, uh, gone down significantly. And it is largely consistent with the original plan that was submitted, um, i- i- as far as, um, the development and the type of housing units that the applicant is proposing. Um, if you'll notice, like Mr. Dale pointed out, there's some comments there from the engineer and myself that are pretty drilled down and, um, detailed. But those are all taken care of at the final, um, plan. And like, um, Attorney Kirk indicated, this is only the preliminary process. And, and what we're doing here is just reviewing it for conceptually, if, if this is a feasible plan. And then when we get to the final stages of, of each phase is when we're going to, um, you know, get down to the nitty gritty and make sure that they, this plan complies largely with the zoning ordinance. But, um, overall, I think this is a great plan. The, um, elevations, I'm, I'm impressed with the single family elevations along with the apartment buildings. I think it's kind of, it might be a little bit different than what we're used to seeing here in Shelby Township. But I think it also offers like a fresh face, um, to this development.
Great, thank you. Uh, so I'll ask the, the petitioner to, to take the mic again. Again, there really, I think there's just the one issue and I think some, some additional clarity for when we see you again, I think will be necessary as to, okay, what is the impact going to be on the traffic? Um, and, and what, what impact will that, that, that adjustment from the, from, from the two hundred and fifty senior units to the, to the, to the apartments and, 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 you know? Again, now you've got, you've got an exercise point to Van Dyke, which, you know, may be a positive, may be a negative. But again, again, I guess that the burden is sort of on you to show us that, okay, this site is still viable, these, these, these adjustments. You know, the, the, the traffic is still, um, and there may be, I think there was the point on, you know, is there, is there, is there a way to move the, the mailboxes? You know, why don't you, you know, why don't you contemplate that, you know, as you, as you make whatever revisions that you do? So Jim, I'll turn it back over to you. Um, I think that, that's sort of the, the, the big question for us.
Yeah, no, I think those are, are all points that are very, very well taken. We appreciate them. Traffic, slowing down traffic is always a primary concern. Uh, we're, we're, we, although, although the finished plan will always generate more traffic than obviously, uh, the unfinished plan, that open land. Uh, there will be new, new traffic. Um, we think that we've done a good job of controlling it and we'll continue to bring back these deep details. But specifically, um, if we go back to some of my original thoughts of, of how the earlier plan really envisioned a very porous network, uh, be able to come into the, the direction that the neighborhood, either off of twenty-five or Van Dyke, and going in multiple different ways and go through. What we've tried to do is make it quote unquote, an unfriendly neighborhood to drive through. So if, uh, the additional sixty-seven, um, home, single family homes, they'll access only off of Lawson Road. I suppose certainly if they're going to work down Van Dyke, they might come and turn down the, uh, the diagonal boulevard and go out to Van Dyke. But, but those, uh, sixty-seven single family homes will come out on the Lawson. And most of them will probably go out to twenty-five, some of them will come back into the site and then further east. Uh, but the good news is, is that we really think that we've done a very good job of preventing cut through traffic. We looked at that high school traffic. I've got tw- twin sons who just graduated from high school and they've both already been in an accident because they're driving, you know, where they shouldn't be driving and everything else like that. So, so we've, we've deliberately made this an unfriendly neighborhood to drive through, to cut through. And we think that's going to drastically improve, um, the neighborhood as, as it's built out. I, I really appreciate the comments of the, um, uh, of the mailbox. I'll take a close look at those. Go ahead, Steve.
I, I just wanted to remind the board that, or the planning commission that, you know, originally we engaged a, a traffic study and, um, so the original density and original approval was based on a substantially higher density. And so, you know, there is a traffic study, it was submitted, we can certainly bring that back to the, uh, planning commission if they don't have it, haven't seen it. Not if it was part of our original or this, this amended submittal. But, uh, you know, lowering the densities even further support the development. The other thing is twenty-five mile road, if, if you read and understand the study, um, you know, I was involved years ago when they actually widened Van Dyke and that was very important. So the Van Dyke widening along with, um, uh, the traffic study will show that, uh, the, 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 the project can easily support the additional, uh, residents.
See, we, I, I mean, I recall it because I think I was one of the few members on the board, you know, when this first thing came to the, to the VOD. But, but I think, I think it would be beneficial if that is recirculated. And, you know, whatever, maybe tweaks to, given the changes that you've made, I think would be helpful. I think appropriate.
Jerry, I know I just copied it, so I, I know it was our intent to make sure we got it to the planning commission. Maybe we didn't get it to you in time for today's meeting.
No, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, I think there's still time for us to just, you know, but I think that would be, that would be helpful before we find the.
It, it quite frankly, we lot of, we lost a lot of sales. I, I recall, um, a lot of people wanted to see the Van Dyke connection. So although I think if we could, you know, if we cut off that, what I call that, uh, shortcut traffic that are trying to get around the twenty-five mile backup. I think all in all, it's, it, the residents of loss of the phase one are going to find that having direct access to Van Dyke is going to make a much smoother flow even for buses. I think it'll actually be a major improvement.
Okay.
Really with just one access off twenty-five, because twenty-five is the problem, quite frankly.
Okay, uh, Mr. Epping, you have any final comments?
I'm just going through the, the, the residence notes, but I think they really were around that single issue and we'll, we'll do a better job of identifying Timbers Edge as well.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, can I, can I respond to the, uh, the previous comment about it about?
No, you've had, you've had your opportunity. So I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Move by chairs or support by Dalu?
No, we do have one.
All in favor?
And about a moment ago.
All right. Okay, so, uh, our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use. Protect the public health, safety, and welfare inadequacy of, uh, public access to the site. Uh, we can recommend approval of this preliminary submission. We could, uh, disapprove the request or we could, uh, table it to evaluate it further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I'll move to recommend approval to the township board of planned unit development application number twenty dash seventeen PUD one. Steve Mancini for Legacy Village, overall development plan modification to permit the development of a mixed-use residential and commercial project based on the following findings. The planned unit development amendment is consistent with the original prime preliminary plan approval in two thousand and six. The design provides appropriate land use relationships within the project and to existing development in the vicinity. Project achieves the PUD objective of encouraging innovative site and building design. The proposed development will not adversely impact any surrounding development. The proposed deviations from existing zoning ordinance standards are modest in scope and may be allowed as part of the PUD approval process. And the applicant will provide a traffic study showing the projected impact this development will have on Lawson Drive.
Second.
Move by Turner. Who is the supporter opponent?
Mike.
Oh, it's Mike, okay. Support by Flynn. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone? Bear with him, it always takes him a little while. Commissioner Oppone?
Do we know which number is his, Mr. Chair?
Uh, no, I do not. Well, tell you what, the chair votes yes, uh, the motion carries and I guess we look forward to, to seeing the revisions, gentlemen. Okay, next item is, uh, uh, multifamily residential. Um, and this is a, a conceptual proposal. I believe the developer wanted to, uh, get our thoughts on, uh, what he's considering to propose on a, on a, on a parcel on twenty-two mile road. Uh, this one is somewhat informal, so is the, is the petitioner representative here?
Mr. Moffett, this is Jim Epping again. I'm working with, uh, Giovanni Aluya, who is on the line. And, uh, he's asked me to speak on his behalf. He is here to answer any questions.
Okay, so you don't, you don't get to charge mileage twice?
Not from, not from here.
Okay. So what, uh, what do you, what do you got for this, for, for this request, Mr. Epic?
Well, again, I'll, I'd like to share my screen here. Although I hit some button and I may have screwed it up. Let me see if I can do this a different way. Mr. Chairman, are you seeing my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Aluya is, is part of a development team, uh, and is actually a local businessman, owns Olympia Homes and owns a number of, uh, of residential projects in Shelby Township. He and his, his company have been in the area for, uh, several decades and, and, uh, good part of, uh, Shelby Township, no doubt. Um, correct my spelling as we're working here. What we'd like to do tonight is, uh, talk about a piece of property on twenty-two mile road, on the north side of twenty-two mile road. It's just under six acres. That's between, uh, M fifty-three and Shane Road, right next to, uh, the ITC power lines. The property, uh, we're considering bringing in for, uh, proposal, a PUD proposal, which would go through a lot of the same rigor, uh, that we just spent talking about the last project. But it's an unusual piece of property. It has some, what we think are some, uh, unique characteristics. We've, uh, are ready to come forward and propose, uh, a terrific use and what we know will be a successful use for the site. But we would, uh, love any unofficial, informal feedback, uh, questions, uh, comments, thoughts from the planning commission so that we can, uh, kind of right-size and ready our proposal and come back to your commission, uh, in the next, ideally, the next month or two with a PUD proposal. So, again, we're on twenty-two mile road. North is up on this grind. The site is basically a square site, uh, undeveloped site immediately east of, I'm sorry, west of the ITC corridor. It's surrounded to the west and to the north by the Shelby West, um, uh, neighborhood. It's a manufactured home neighborhood. To the south, we've got a few, uh, R one B, single family residential, uh, neighborhoods. And then on the other side of the corridor are some additional R one B, uh, existing neighborhoods. Our site is zoned, uh, R one B, and we'll go through the master plan in a minute. It is master planned to be an extension of. And we'll go through the master plan in a minute. It is master planned to be an extension of uh, uh manufactured housing zoning. The site in itself um is, is fairly wooded. It's a, it's really a pretty site. It has just a little bit of a roll to it. We do have an existing open drain that cuts through the air, the, the frontage area here uh, with access only off of twenty-two mile road. The ma- the master plan uh, envisions this to be an extension or kind of in a squaring off of this manufactured housing uh, to bring this all into one zoning use. Again, it's currently zoned R one B. Olympia Homes and um Giovanni currently own a number of apartment complexes in Shelby Township. Their most recent is off of uh, Ansberry Road, just north of twenty-four mile, just north of the township, right by the gas station. I'm sorry, the car wash. Uh, you make a uh, right-hand turn at the car wash as you're going north. And at the back is our um eighty units called Ansberry East. Uh, it's a beautiful neighborhood. I've got some pictures here that we'll take a look at, but, but uh, it's been a very, very successful uh neighborhood. Again, like our last project, it's, it's rental housing. This is only two-story compared to the three that we just looked at. And this is a little different in the sense that it is two and three-bedroom. Um, each home has its own individual door, so you're not going up an elevator. So um, what I like about this is, is there's just a beautiful track record, literally within, you know, a, a quarter mile of Township Hall that's been built, that's operating well, uh, that's owned by, by Giovanni and his local company. Uh, and has a track record of, of absolutely no police issues, no, no enforcement issues, really just a great neighborhood. What we're looking at are uh, four buildings, that would be ten-unit buildings, five up and five down. Uh, they all have a one-car garage in interior to the buildings. Every unit gets one car uh, of garage parking and then one parking spot behind it. And then around the side, we've got guest parking as well as a small street in the middle here with some guest parking. So the guest, the, the, the site fully parks um, under R one B zoning. If we were to uh, in terms of setbacks, we're, we would be required to have a fifty-foot setback uh, from R one B, I should say, under multiple family, we'd be required to have a fifty-foot setback. We've got about an eighty-four, we'd be required to have about a hundred and twenty-foot setback in the front. We've got about two hundred and sixty, and we'd be required to have fifty-foot in the back, and these buildings are, are right at fifty-foot. So, other than a rezoning to a PUD under multiple family, um, we wouldn't require any additional variances, any additional deviations from the ordinance within a PUD. We have an equivalency, a net equivalency of an R seven zoning uh, compared to the existing R one B or the existing uh, manufactured housing. We're proposing forty units. If this was manufactured housing, under the master plan, it would accommodate about forty-two units uh, based on the adjacent neighborhood. If it remained R one B, uh, there would be about eight units on the, the property. Um, but again, not unlike the last project, we really think uh, we look at the salability of these and immediately adjacent to uh, the ITC corridor, uh, adjacent to the various different land uses. We think that a for-sale product would be um, is probably what has prevented this, this property from being developed previously. But the, the existing use and the success of the Ansberry project tell us that it would really be a great use on the site. I'll show you just a couple pictures of Ansberry, uh, which again, we encourage anybody to go to. I went over and, and they really are just very, very well-built um, uh, buildings. Again, it's a company, a local company that owns and operates and maintains these. They've got two uh, uh, full-time um, uh, leasing and maintenance people on site. Um, generate, you know, literally hundreds of jobs building these. Unlike Ansberry, which is eighty units, we're proposing only forty, so half the size of the development uh, on, on the other, uh, on the twenty-two mile site, with close-ups of it. Mr. Chairman, that's, that's what we'd like to bring forward um, from an engineering point of view. Uh, we know that we can accommodate the drain. Uh, we, we know that we can uh, accommodate detention and really substantial landscape buffers, both uh, along twenty-two mile road. I don't even think you'll see it because of the setback. And then to uh, to the sides, they actually aren't going to be able to have a significant buffer here because besides the ITC quarter, we actually have another uh, pole uh, tower right on our property, and so there's a utility easement uh, on the, on the east side.
Can you, can you build it R one B?
Um, I don't think you can sell it R one B. And so therefore, no, you cannot build it.
No, why would you say that? So then the Golden Park has got some of similar issues and they're able to.
It does have some similar is, issues, but it doesn't have all the adjacencies. Um, and and uh, you know, we've seen areas and other, other areas. Um, the, the air, the neighborhood to the immediate uh, uh, west and north is, is, is really a terrific neighborhood. It's, it seems to be very well-cared-for and great families in there. Um, but, but uh, given all the challenges of this site, uh, it cannot be economically developed as a for-sale product.
See, you're surrounded by all stuff that is for-sale. And so I think that, that does, I guess, in my opinion, present a little bit of a challenge to and, and I'm not sure that you could get forty-two uh, uh, manufactured homes in there, given the issues that, that you've pointed out. But that irregardless, again, it just seems, it, it, it seems like it's, it's, it's a fair amount of density for, for that size. I mean, some, some very big footprints in the relatively small parcel. Um, but I'll, I'll, as, why don't you, if you want to take that down, let me uh, call on the uh, my fellow commissioners to, to ask any questions, to offer their comments.
Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
For what it's worth, uh, Mr. Eppen, this is, you know, last one I su- kind of supported the rental property. This time I'm really less crazy about this concept. It's really, when I look at it, it's more of a linear, basic apartment development. Um, Mr. Rob Moffett asked if you could develop an R one B, and I do see it could have some challenges, given the makeup of the property. But is there something you can do less? I think there is, something you can do less than an R seven development on here that would give you something that you could sell? And I believe you could probably sell this if it was the right product, other than simply four buildings with ten apartments in each one.
Well, again, uh, you know, we haven't completed a full-blown market study, but the market analysis that we do continue, have, have done, it continues to say that'd be very, very challenging to sell any for-sale product. We looked at uh, uh, single-family attached and two-plux, uh, four-plux units. Um, we don't really look at it as a density issue because of the high density immediately surrounding. I think if you go over to Ansberry East right now, uh, despite the fact that it's doubled the density, the buildings are really kind of a human scale. The street is a very human scale. And so, um, and it's, and it's a very quiet development, and so we don't look at it as a, as a high-density use at all. Um, we'd love to meet people over at Ansberry East and, and give you a tour, because I think if you've been over there, um, I think you'd, you'd, you'd look at those buildings and that use and the management of them very favorably.
Well, I mean, you said it's not a density issue, but as I look at, at it, it certainly is a density issue. So I will uh, take it under advisement at this time, but for me, I think it's going to be a hard sell, given what you put forth tonight. So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, has anyone else wish to comment?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Flynn?
Uh, despite the fact that I'm a lame duck, if the, if it's a binary choice between uh trailer park and uh, multifamily, uh, I think most people in Shelby would prefer multifamily. That's all.
Okay. Any other comments? Julie, want to weigh in?
Sure, um, Mr. Eppen, Eppen and I have talked about this site, and this is the reason why I, I asked him to come in front of the, the uh, planning commission. Um, I think I, I, I understand um, the constrictions on this property. And I know that um, you know, I, I mimic Mike and what he said. Uh, we would probably rather have some sort of multiple family rather than a mobile home park. And this is just kind of an odd parcel because it's surrounded by single-family residential. And of course, you have the mobile home park behind you. Um, you know, I suggested to Mr. Eppen where I, I do think that maybe there is a product out there that, that would um you know, would be better than, than the dense uh, multiple family. And um, you know, I mean, I, and I, I agree with Mr. Turner. I think maybe ours, our four, our, you know, five, somewhere about there would, you know, and maybe small homes, small lots. Um, I know years ago that there was a very preliminary proposal for this site. Um, it never, I, I don't think it went anywhere, um, but it was for small homes and small, small lots. So, um, I just think it's the, the, the product here, the end product is, is the big question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, i- i- is the consensus, I'm trying to, to get more focus on, is the, is the consensus density, is the consensus the size of the buildings, or is the consensus rental?
I don't know that, I mean, you, 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 you've just heard opinions.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Sort of figure out what uh, um, listen, I'm not, I'm, I don't misunderstand my, you know, my, my points weren't that it's got to be developed R one B, because I understand, but, but uh, and R seven, I think is, 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 would be too much. Um, that there's, I think, we'll know it when we see it. I'm not going to tell you how to, I'm not going to tell you how to develop it.
No, I, I, I understand that. What we know about the success of, of Ansberry East, and you know, I think that that's our biggest.
You, you, you mentioned that a lot, but aren't there, isn't there multifamily there?
I'm sorry?
It, so is, are those the only developments? Is that the only multifamily on Ansberry?
Uh, there's, there's two different phases of Ansberry, Ansberry East, and I believe it's Ansberry North. Uh, Giovanni and his company own both, the Ansberry East, which is the furthest in, is, is the newer that we're going to replicate here.
Okay, so I mean, it's, again, so, I mean, I get, I get, I get the point that you're trying to make, but it's also a case of this is an isolated development in an area where it's all single-family too.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You can't like sort of pluck Ansberry out and put it there because there's, there's more to it, you know? And it was developed in that neighborhood, that whole street was developed with an idea of, okay, this was going to provide that type of housing for there. You're infilling something that's, that wasn't envisioned, and that's why I said, think of it a little bit different.
Point taken, I understand. Um, what we are seeing over there, and, and I suppose with this, this building type, I guess regardless of where it is, is we're seeing uh, uh, young families move in uh, that are kind of at that preschool age, that five, six-year-old child uh, trying to get into the Shelby Township. And, and the data that Giovanni's keeping is kind of interesting that, that about uh, twenty-five or thirty percent of them then buy a home in Shelby Township. So they kind of use this as a jumpstart for a year or two. Uh, and we think that that same would be true over here to get more young families back into the community.
Fair enough. Okay, anyone else? Um, thank you.
All right, I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you for having us on the agenda.
Uh, planning directors report?
I don't have anything, Chairman Moffett.
Great, does we have any business from the floor? Uh, seeing none, Mr. Dalu, you still with us?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir.
Chair, if I could just jump in for a moment? And just let the planning commission know that uh, the Zoom security is going to change here in the next thirty days, so the upcoming meetings are going to either require a password or a waiting room, so just know that fairly soon, there's going to be a new process for everyone to walk in.
Okay, thank you.
Now, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Dalu. Support by Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Night, everybody.
Good night.